All right, I call to order the meeting of the Gladstone Planning Commission for Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. We have basically three items on the, three or four items on the agenda tonight, our consent agenda, which involves approving the minutes of last meeting, a report from our planner, a public hearing regarding a partition of a .55 acre property into three parcels. And then if we have time, we'll do a little discussion of some ADU requirements that exist in another city, which might be helpful to us to inform whatever action we might take in the future on our own ADU code requirements. So Tammy, if you could call the roll?
I have a couple commissioners just logging in, so I will start and we'll catch them as we go.
Very good.
I think one is Commissioner Langston.
He is muted right now.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Natalie Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Malachi.
Here.
Commissioner Poole.
Here, am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
All right, great. Now we can hear everything I say.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Here.
Chair Milch.
Here. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the first item is the minutes of our August 18th, 2020 meeting. I recall from having read minutes of some planning commission meetings in the past, some discussion, a concern that sometimes when you had a long hearing, the minutes didn't capture all the things that you had talked about and all the criteria that you considered. And I noticed that these minutes were very detailed, very specific, captured a lot of discussion. And so if there's any question in the future about why the decision was made, I thought they captured them very well. I didn't notice any errors. Does anybody else have anything corrections or additions to these minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, Commissioner Natalie Smith moved and Commissioner Malachi seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We turn now to our planner for your monthly planning report, Joy Fields.
Thank you.
Hang on, Joy, I'm gonna make you the co-host. Yeah, you should be co-host.
So the Gladstone monthly planning report for August includes one customer service contact at the counter, 44 phone calls or emails, one or two building permits with land use review, and no pre-application conferences and no administrative decisions. As you all recall from last month, you held a public hearing on potential code amendments related to parking requirements in the C2 zoning district, and a public hearing on a potential rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment to rezone 1.04 acres from R7.1, that is a typo, Tammy. It should be R7.2 to high density residential. The, there were, as I mentioned, no pre-application conferences and no administrative permits. And the building permits included a repair from fire and installation of solar panels. And we are meeting tonight to discuss the three lot partition.
Joy, I had a question. I'm not expecting that it will come about, but if there were any land use permits that were affected due to the wildfires, like because of the wildfire, their permits became invalidated, for example, right? How do we handle that? How do we deal with that? Is there some process involved with that?
The city of Gladstone was not in any of the evacuation areas other than level one of being ready to consider evacuating. I know that the Department of Transportation and Development with Clackamas County is considering for the county what will happen. I know that the county commissioners will be considering how they want to move forward with permits in the future related specifically to the fire. That is something that is beyond me. That would be a decision of city council, whether they wanted to amend the permitting fees if it was related to these particular fires. The ones that have already been approved by you all, I am not sure how they would be impacted because they are in the city limits of Gladstone and outside of the level two or level three evacuation zones.
So on the assumption that this year is not going to be an exception, wildfires will happen again. If the county comes up with some rules on how they're going to manage that, could you bring those to us so we can make a proposal to the city on how we should also do something similar?
I sure will, yes.
It's good to think about that stuff in advance.
Good question, Malachi, good question.
The time limits, the, some of the other things that we impose, you know, you want to give some flexibility in the case of a disaster, so that's good. Any other questions about Joy's report? Joy, I know a couple of the items that we had hearings on were recommendations to the city council. Will you be the staff person then when they have hearings on these at some point in the near future?
I am coordinating with Jackie on that.
Okay.
I will be attending the October 13th city council meeting specifically for the land use permit that you heard last month for the rezoning. And so I, the city attorney and I and Jackie will be determining who is going to be presenting on the potential code amendments. But that material will be ready and will reflect your discussion.
Very good.
Your recommendation.
Sometimes when we go through a long hearing, I, in my head, I think of these things as resolved, but I realize that they still need to be approved by the, by the city council in some cases, and these are two that fall in that category. All right, I recognize a motion to, to approve the reportedly of our planner.
I'll make the motion that we approve the August 2020.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion has been made by Malachi, seconded by, I didn't see because I don't have very many faces on my screen.
It was less.
Seconded by Commissioner Poole. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The report is approved. Okay, now we move on to the next item. I have the script that the city attorney helped prepare for me for doing an online remote hearing. So I open the public hearing now for file number Z0321-20/M, partition of 0.55 acre property into three parcels. And because we're doing this online, we still want to have public participation and reports from proponents and opponents if they are in attendance. So just to go over the procedure for this, first of all, I'd like to know if there are any abstentions from the commissioners themselves for any reason on this item.
None here.
I hear none.
None here either.
Okay. Does anyone?
There. Excuse me. Are we at that place where we need to read or recite the type of hearing it is, or am I getting ahead of myself?
That's kind of what I'm doing now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I got a new script from David Doofman last month for the hearing we did then, and so it's not what you're used to hearing. I'm kind of doing it, reading from that.
Sure.
Okay. So second, I'd like to know if there are any commissioners who would like to declare a conflict of interest, any financial interest in this particular property or project or And I hear none. And now I'd like to ask about whether anybody on the planning commission has had any ex parte contact, including site visits to the site involved. And I'll, we'll just go down the line. I'll start with Commissioner Langston and we'll just move from one chair to another as though we were seated in our normal chairs. Commissioner Langston?
None to report here.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
No ex parte contact. I have driven past the site and looked at it.
Let's see, Commissioner Malachi?
I have none.
Commissioner Poole?
I don't have any ex parte contacts or conflicts with the site.
Did you say you have visited the site?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pat Smith?
No ex parte. I have driven by the site multiple times, but never on a site-specific visit.
All right, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Williams, you'll need to unmute.
Thank you, sir. I will follow Mr. Smith's footsteps. I have been by it many, many times. I have been in the last week driven by. There is no ex parte.
All right, and I'm similar to that, too. I've driven by hundreds of times to take my grandchildren to middle school. That was on the way there. And I did have more of a site-specific look at it in the past week when I knew that we would be talking about it. But because it's so kind of undeveloped right now, I think I'm going to rely on the input from the, from our applicant and, and staff to, to know. So no conflicts or ex parte other than passing by site visit, familiar with, familiar in that way. Now, if there are any, anybody present who wants to challenge anybody on the commission for, regarding their participation in this matter, you can raise your hand online and let me know. I don't see any. And Tammy, let me ask, do you know if we have anybody on the telephone who is not on the video? I can only see 12 pictures on my screen, so I don't know. There may be others here that I can't see.
There are only 12 that are participating.
Okay, very good. Well, that'll make it easier for now until we start sharing the screen with more data. All right, let me let you know, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing or to ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. All right, and at this time, I would like to call on staff, Joy Field, and you may share your screen with us to see the, and thank you, by the way, for sending us the PowerPoint in advance.
Good evening, again. So tonight's application was regarding the parcel at the intersection of Portland Avenue and Glen Echo Avenue, which is approximately 0.55 acres. And the proposal is to divide that parcel into three lots. The current zoning for that parcel is R7.2, and it is a low-density residential property in the comprehensive plan. The property is not subject to environmental overlays, although you all may be aware that the Glen Echo wetland is down the road. But that property does not have any known wetlands on, on the site per our data. Public notice was sent to adjacent property owners within 250 feet of the subject property and sent to department heads. We did receive comments from Clackamas County and a combined comment from engineering and public works. We also received comment from a neighbor who has concerns about the safety of the The R7.2 zoning district creates the, the framework for dividing this parcel, and it requires a minimum lot area of 7,200 square feet. And for a two-family or multifamily dwelling, the minimum lot area is 3,600 feet per dwelling The proposed partition includes one lot that is 7,200 square feet, Lot 1. Lot 2, which is proposed at 7,209 square feet, and then Lot 3, which is proposed for 8,009 The Gladstone municipal code is set up such that development standards are often required at the partition or land division timeline. And so in the staff report, I went through all of the applicable development standards that apply to this partition. So the partition of land requires street frontage improvements. It requires the ADA accessibility requirements. It requires water and sanitary sewer and a lot of things that may not come into play until the buildings are actually built. However, the only time to address it per the zoning regulations is during the land division process. So for tonight's application, there are 14 special conditions. 13 of them are addressing section 17.42.030, which is that any supplemental design and construction specifications adopted by the city shall be met. And you'll notice that item number 13 is the pre-construction conference for the applicants to meet with the city to ensure that all of the lighting, water, sewer, right-of-way easements and street improvements and their construction plans meet the requirements of the city. A lot of the development standards address parking, pedestrian circulation, streets and roads, and the connection to streets and roads. There is an odd situation here because Glen Echo is inside the city limits of Gladstone, but it is a county road. And so you may have noticed in the application that they actually received a driveway permit from Clackamas County to access the properties off of Glen Echo. However, the, the ultimate goal of having an unobstructed sidewalk on both sides, easements that allow for public utilities and public use of the sidewalk, ADA ramps at the intersection of Portland Avenue, and driveway aprons, and easements for the road to be wide enough are shown on the design that was submitted by the applicant. I would note that the proposal includes two off-street parking spaces per two-family dwelling. The code requires 1.5, so they are proposing extra parking. They have the frontage improvements identified on their site plan. For those of you not used to looking at site plan, they include a lot of information. They include the garage for each duplex. So this duplex is served by two single-car garages. And then there are two additional parking spots down here on the same parcel. So this parcel or Lot 1 includes 1, 2, 3, 4 off-street parking spaces. It also includes a sidewalk and a connection to sanitary sewer and improvements to the frontage of Glen Echo. In the application materials, the applicant is proposing to address stormwater and erosion control during the building permit process, and they are proposing to use the existing utility pole to add a street light near the intersection of Portland Avenue and Glen Echo. You'll see in this aerial image that was taken in November of 2018 that there was a, an accessory structure. Once the property is partitioned, and there is a new property line here, the accessory structure will have to be removed if it is not already removed. This accessory structure is not shown on their site plans, and based on their site plans, it's my understanding that the applicant is intending to remove that. But it, it would have to go if it's on a new lot. It does include the proposal of addressing water and sewer during the building permitting process. There are times where there's existing services that need video inspection to ensure that they meet the city standards. There is an existing house that is accessed off of Portland Avenue. And so I would, would estimate that water and sewer may have to be addressed at the building permitting process stage, but only if it's necessary. Section 17.64.030 provides the parameters for building sites, including the lot size, width, shape, and orientation. The applicant provided a proposal where parcel one ranges from 59 feet to 60 feet. Parcel in, with parcel two ranges from 55.23 to 75.31 feet, and parcel three ranges from 51.76 to 71.70 feet. Parcel three is a corner lot. The Gladstone municipal code requires a minimum of 60 feet on corner lots to ensure that there is adequate space for developing a residential unit. Because parcel three already has an existing dwelling unit on there, that is one thing for you all to consider when you're looking at this partition. Does it meet the intent? Does it meet the minimum lot depth? If you average those out. The parcel depths all exceed 100 feet. The, all lots have the 20-foot minimum street frontage with a range of 51.76 to 75.31, and none of the lots are through lots. When you are talking road standards, they, the code clearly discusses if there are properties behind these lots that require access through these lots, that access is Bear with me one second because I am, I am discussing this and I'm going to go up to a previous slide so you can see the current tax lot. The current tax lot is surrounded by three parcels. The parcel directly behind was part of a partition that gained access through this lot. Because this parcel has dedicated access through this parcel, the partition that we are discussing tonight does not have to supply this back lot with access because it already hasn't. I may have lost my space. There it is. Staff recommendation after looking at the applicant is to approve the proposed project with the 14 special conditions of approval. And I am happy to discuss any of the items that I briefly mentioned in further detail if you request.
Joy, I do have a question, but it wasn't on the slide, it was actually on the planning report itself.
Perfect.
On page 320, it was regarding 1764060. There was a comment about existing on or after the effective date and said it didn't apply because it was years later. And I was just wondering if you could clarify that because it seems like years later is still after that date.
And what page did you say it was?
320.
Let me bring it up so that I have it. And so page three of the...
It was 3-20, I think.
Yeah.
17. 17. I am trying to find it. Bear with me. 17.64040?
060.
Maintenance of minimum title requirement.
So the thing I was wanting to get clarification on is the the comment says that it's not applicable because it's years after the ordinance, whereas the ordinance says it applies if it's on or after this date. And it seems like years after would still be after the date. So I just wondered if you could clarify that.
I would agree with you that years after. The lot area requirements of the Gladstone Municipal Code are met. And they are all above 7,200 square feet. There is no open space requirement for this type of development. If it was a planned unit development or a PUD, there would be an open space requirement. And so I think I read this wrong, and I apologize. It is not applicable because it's... There's no... There's no dedicated open space in the comprehensive plan on this spot. There's no dedicated open space or required yard space that is required for this type of development. And the lot area is met. And so I see that the reasoning is incorrect in the finding. And I can clarify that before there is a decision for Chair Milch to approve.
Thank you.
Joy? Oh, Darren. Darren, could you speak up a little? We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Chairman Williams here. Do I understand on the plan, the only thing that is not according to code is the frontage on Glen Echo for the lot size? Is that correct?
The frontage on parcel 3 or Lot 3 has a... I will share my screen again so that you can see it. It has a bull bout on Glen Echo, which makes the corner lot narrower than 60 feet. However, if you read... So there's this little extension here from parcel 2 into parcel 3. And so the resulting lot width for this piece of Lot 3 is only 51.76 feet. This side up here is 71.7 feet. So if this line went straight down, then it would meet it, but then Lot 2 would not have enough square footage. So if you read the section about the corner lot frontage, it says to ensure there's enough space to meet the 20-foot street setback on both sides to allow the corner lot to be developable. This corner lot is already developed with an existing home. And so that is... The intent of the 60-foot, 60-foot road frontage on corner lots would be to ensure there's enough space to be developed. That is my reading of the code. If Commissioner Malachi or another commissioner would like to look at the specifics, I'm happy to do so.
So actually, so that bull bout you're talking about, basically adding it makes these number 2 comply, removing it makes number 2 not comply, and vice versa with number 3, right?
Yes. Clackamas County does not apply because it's inside the city limits of Gladstone. The other item that Commissioner Williams asked about was setbacks. The setbacks show a five-foot setback on the sides for these duplexes. The Gladstone Municipal Code says that the setback shall be 20% of the average lot width, or 15 feet, whichever is less, and in no case shall the setback be less than five feet. So it meets the "and in no case shall it be less than five feet", but it doesn't quite meet the setbacks. Now setbacks can be addressed here tonight, or they can be addressed during the building permitting process. Because that is something that is addressed during the building permitting process.
Joy? If you would, when I look at that, I see that the setback is five feet. It's also because of the lot line. Is it five feet all the way, or does it actually looks like it's... Does it get wider?
It is wider in certain areas, yes.
Definitely. It doesn't get smaller necessarily, but it...
It does not. There's this dash line of the five-foot setback.
Thank you. I'll make sure I'm reading it right.
You are.
I personally like what I thought the turnaround. This was a turnaround fire. Calculate the distance. That's interesting. Use some space or additional parking.
Commissioner Williams, we can't hear you. Can you speak up, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I said that I really like... I originally thought that the front parking area was that a hammer can like for a fire. Not taking into account the distance from the road to the property. I really like the use that they utilized their space.
I will second that comment. I know that Glen Echo itself is not a real good street for street parking. So having the off-street parking as part of the entry to the duplexes looked like a good design. So to the extent that you all worked together on this and came up with that solution, I think you're addressing something that, for this particular site, is a good approach to take. Joy, let me ask you one thing. You made reference to the permitting process later on. Is this kind of like the situation we had with the apartment property where we first approved the zoning change? Okay, so is tonight really the planning commission's bite at the apple? And beyond this, when it gets to permitting, it would be done at the staff level and coordinated with city staff. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not going to be having this come back for a second phase to us. So we should try to deal with all these issues here tonight if there are anything that we have concerns about.
My understanding is that these restrictions we put on go with the property, right?
The understanding is that any modifications or additions that you do to the conditions of approval would go with the final decision. And the final land use decision is referred back to during the building permitting process, and they are unable to get their final occupancy until all of the special conditions of approval are met. And so that is where special condition number 14 of final occupancy comes into play.
All right. That's helpful. Thank you.
As far as the section up top that we were discussing, I think we should hold off on our internal discussion about pros and cons and things like that until after the applicant has a chance to talk.
Yes. Yeah, I agree. Commissioner Langston, did you have a question or a comment? I thought I heard your voice during the discussion.
No, I was just going to agree about the parking off-street and it being helpful on that particular avenue.
All right. Do any of the other commissioners have questions about the staff report before we move on to the applicant's presentation? All right, then we will recognize a report from the applicant. Who will be speaking on behalf of the applicant tonight? Bruce, all right. I think you are unmuted, and we welcome you. Introduce yourself, and you have at least 15 minutes normally, but take whatever time you need. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Goldson. I'm the applicant's representative. I'm also the planner and engineer for this project. And by the way, I also was the engineer and applicant for the partition to the west. So I'm completely familiar with the site. I've worked with Joy. This is the first time I've worked with Joy. I've found her to be very thorough, and the staff report is fairly complete. The one thing I noticed was the access building is shown on the tentative plan. It's not labeled, but it's on there. It's a square. It's a rectangle in parcel 2. It actually shows on there. The existing house is to remain. We looked at several designs, and this one seemed to be the best. We looked at putting the access on the north side of the house, but there is not enough room there. It's about 14 and a half feet. I think it may be 20 feet in some areas, but it's really cramped. So then we would have a problem with a turnaround and some other issues, and we felt this was the best location. The additional parking, the applicant and I both agree that the additional parking affords us with opportunities there to avoid parking on the street. There all the utilities are available. I've worked with Clackamas County in there on Glen Echo about their concerns. We showed the new ADA ramps on both Portland Avenue and Glen Echo and realized that there may be some sidewalk adjustments that even though there is one on Portland Avenue to avoid obstruction there and to make it the proper width. This is the ultimate design. These duplexes is what the applicant would like to build, and certainly will approach that in the building permit application. If the widths need to change slightly, then they could be changed. This is just a concept of the buildings themselves. If the existing house was to be removed, it would be very straightforward to have all the lots meet all the requirements. That bump out is necessary to achieve our minimum lot areas for all three parcels. I think the road will be much safer. I don't know what the concern was of the neighbor about safety, because we're actually going to widen the road. It'll be sidewalks and a clean accessway along Glen Echo and already is along Portland Avenue. So I don't know what the concern might have been there. I think that unless there's some specific questions, I will conclude my presentation.
Are you able to have Joy point out on here where is the street light you wanted to put in?
The street light is right there. On the opposite side of Portland Avenue, there's an existing pole that's going to remain. And that would light the intersection. Do you see that? It's, yeah, right there.
Okay.
There is a street light farther down Glen Echo on a power pole on the north side of the street.
Thank you.
And they appear to be where the sidewalk needs to go.
Yeah. Well, those power lines will have to be removed or put underground in that area across the frontage, or the poles moved or whatever. But there's a street light just past the previous partition on the north side of the street.
Up here.
Yes, down in there. Actually, it's down a little further.
Bruce, this is Chair Milch. I have a question for you. You indicated you were involved in the partition of the property just to the west. That's the property that lies between this property and Jal Duncan's property. Is that correct? And is that the one where there was a lot of pipes and work going on over the past several, not recently, but last year, I think? I remember a lot of looked like drainage or sewer or something going in from the back part of that lot down toward the street.
Well, all the utilities had to be run up from the street up that common drive to the lot in the rear.
Okay.
And then there was an issue about storm drainage. We discovered that in the next driveway down, the culvert was actually running adverse grades. And there was some work that had to be done there to make that corrected.
Okay, so that work was all on an adjacent property, but it did not involve advanced preparation of any kind for this property?
Well, we did extend, yes. But we're going to extend the storm sewer up as a part of this work.
Okay. All right. I just didn't know whether the property I had seen work being done on was this one or another one, and I think you've...
No, it was the adjacent one.
Okay, thank you. All right. Other commissioners, questions for the applicant?
I have none.
I would just say that I appreciate him identifying himself. I recognized him from the previous project. So I don't see any red flags or anything here, so I'm comfortable.
All right. Well, I will open it up at this point to public comment. Are there... Is there anyone present who would like to speak either in favor of the proposal or in opposition to the proposal? Tammy, you indicated the 12 people I see on the screen are all we have, so it doesn't look like we have any outside... Joy?
There is one attendee that I am not familiar with. Yes.
Yeah. Hi there. I'm Zach, and this is my brother Jason. And we are the applicants for the Portland Avenue property. Yeah.
Okay.
Been working with Bruce, and Bruce is... All the, you know, drawings.
And do you reside in that property now?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Yeah. And then to answer the question, the structure, the auxiliary structure, that will be taken down. It's still in the drawing there, but it'll be gone.
All right. Well, seeing no public comment...
Chair Milch, this is Pat Smith. I have a question.
Chairman Milch, this is Pat Smith. I have a question.
Okay.
There was a letter that came in through Jackie Betts.
Yes.
And I'm I'm wondering if if that needs to be considered. As I read it, there's a couple of things that are mentioned here, and I'm not sure if they're planning permission issues. One of them was a a neighbor felt the storm grain was inadequate and the other comment that was that there was a hidden mile per hour sign in Shrubbery that the city apparently hadn't done anything with. They don't seem to be in our purview, but it is testimony that came in from a citizen.
Yes, I appreciate the letter that came from the Elrbees. She does point out a couple of things related issues nearby this property, but I don't think I I think I agree with your assessment, Commissioner Smith, that they don't have anything to do directly with this particular application. We will want to see and have city staff follow up on the drainage issue adjacent to the Portland Avenue side of this property and the speed limit sign, if it's still covered up. She made reference to some traffic issues. She did a account one day of the number of vehicles that went by, and the reason I'm familiar with this property is that I know when our grandchildren were in middle school and came home on the bus to our home, the buses came down Glen Echo. And I think there are also Oregon City School District buses, which also go down Glen Echo and turn left onto Portland Avenue to get closer to the Candy Lane Elementary School that's in that school district. So there are a lot of buses, a lot of traffic, and I for one appreciate that that they're taking into consideration the proper widening of this street and the proper distance from the corner for access for parking because that's a recognition that you know, there's there's some conditions that need to be adhered to here. Do other commissioners have comments regarding the letter that was received? You should have all received it in an email. Okay, well, staff, Joy, if you would like to do a recap for us, then we can have a discussion that would lead us to making a decision.
Okay. Hmm.
You can just pull up your summary, maybe?
Yes. Um, I was trying to find that email as you all were speaking, and so I had my email up to bring it up. So I have to change what is on my screen to be able to share it.
Okay.
So staff are recommending approval of the proposed partition. And I am happy to go to the 14 special conditions if you like would like to see them and see if there's any additions or modifications that you would like to consider.
Let me ask the the ones that you brought up during the discussion. Are we? How does how does the commission feel about the 60-foot frontage requirement for the main existing lot?
Well, that should be part of our discussion, though, right? So we should close the public hearing first?
Oh, yeah, I indicated since I since we had no nobody here, I was saying, I'll I'll accept. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Let's do it that way.
I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing?
All right. It's been moved and seconded by Malachi and Commissioner Pat Smith. All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Okay, now, so for the discussion on the the 60-foot frontage. Commissioners?
Yeah, so can actually, can you pull up that image again?
Did you want to see the one where it she was showing us the bump out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am getting to it.
It's okay.
You're fine.
Okay, so really, we're looking at two options, right? One is either the lot three has the proper setback on this lot so that future development could happen. Or two, lot two doesn't have enough space to meet the R 7.2 guidelines, right? And if you have to pick between the two, I would honestly say that I would prefer the lot to have the amount of space that's required by our guidelines because lot three is already built out. That's my personal thought.
I agree.
Joy, you made reference earlier to sort of the a range in widths and an average. It it would look to me like about two thirds of the site has a width of about 70 feet. And you know, and and maybe a third of it is only that 52 foot wide. Is that something that's done typically is to look at kind of a weighted average of the width of the site to meet a minimum requirement?
Usually when it's clearly stated that the minimum is 60-foot road frontage, that is the the case. And but it is I they also the case that it says that it is the the situation for corner lots for to ensure that future development can take place. So I feel like in this case, because it's already developed, there's a you're following the intent of the ordinance if you approve it as proposed.
Certainly with the position of the house where it is, that slightly narrower width on the one side is not affecting anything that would be like a setback or a development because it is already developed.
And future development would not be allowed to have a driveway onto Glen Echo for this parcel because of distance to an intersection. And so future development right here would 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 not be conducive. There would be no access development here allowed. And so there appears to be enough space in the back for a dwelling currently. And if one was to be replaced, it would have to meet setback requirements. And it would have enough space to do so where the current house is.
All right, so commissioners, let me just kind of pull you on this one issue. Are are you in agreement with the recommendation that that this this particular condition has been met by the current siding? The proposed siding, I should say. Do I hear any objections to that?
No objection here.
Hearing none, we'll we'll assume that that issue is settled. The other matter that you brought up was the five-foot setbacks between properties. Do commissioners have concerns about that?
So maybe we could talk about what those are generally for. They're usually for service, right?
Access.
And I feel like the the four duplexes have enough service access as they are. And I'm and I don't think that the five foot on the other side really provides a lot of benefit considering that's actually the back of the other house rather than the side.
Oh, yeah.
Right? So I don't think service utilities would be trying to use that side of the building for access. And I don't think we'd be trying to put a road through that that section either. So I don't have concerns about that setback on that side.
I agree.
I would want to say, though, that that section in the middle probably want to make sure that it is accessible for the utility service if if that's where the gauges are going to be or whatever.
Beaters?
Yeah.
All right. So do we have a consensus that that the setbacks as proposed are adequate, considering the, you know, the you know, in the full context of the way the whole property is laid out? That's what I'm hearing you say, Malachi.
In context to the fact it's against the back of another building.
Okay. All right, we've looked at at the things that that kind of popped out as during the presentation. Are there any other concerns from members of the commission about any of the other conditions for this that as staff has outlined them?
It's not a concern, but I actually want to congratulate them on the parking. I am really pleased to see that there's four off-street parking on this. That is better than we usually get.
Agreed.
Right, yeah, I I was actually gonna make the same reference that that's that parking issue is is well covered here. Regardless of our requirement, having two parking spots is very practical and makes it work. Especially with duplexes, you're going to have some visitors. We welcome them. Yeah, I I don't see. I have one quick question for staff, and this isn't a criteria for approval, so if I'm getting in the weeds, correct me, but does the city have any plans or anything that needs to be done that could be correlated with this in terms of street improvements? Anything the city does on its, I understand, is not part of this, but given that intersection and what we're working with, it would be nice to correlate them if there's anything coming down the road.
Again, Glen Echo is a county road in this location. And so there is a balancing act between county and city requirements, county and city desires. Based on my conversations with the public works staff during the pre-application meeting, it sounded that the additional right-of-way that would be required for the county would also meet the needs of the city if the city were to take over the ownership of the road. The the sidewalk is an improvement to what is currently there. Now, there would be the option of the developers having a bond or a performance guarantee to allow them to develop the sidewalk after the installation of the homes. But it would have to be developed before the the land use decision was fully implemented. So I I am not sure of anything regarding city intent that would be contrary to what is being proposed here. And especially since it's a county road.
Perky situation because it's there's the city right there, so. But I appreciate you clarifying that and I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
I'd like to say one other thing. I think it actually provides really good fire access, too. That's the design that is one thing I I noticed, too. Is that even if the the fire truck was to park on the street, I think they have really good access to both locations.
That was one thing that was discussed is 150 feet is as far as the hoses can reach. And so this property line is 120 feet. So even from the street, as you mentioned, there would be access.
One other thing I want to say, too. The choice of having two duplex properties here in the 7.2 zone. That's part of the goal of the HB 2001 to allow, you know, the so-called middle, a missing middle type of housing. And some of the community concerns about that are, oh, they don't fit into the neighborhood. You know, they wouldn't want to see them on some of the homes up in the neighborhood near Cracksburger School. But right across the street from where these duplexes would be going in are a row of duplexes that very likely have a very similar design. So if anything, they fit better here than they might in other neighborhoods. And and I think that was that was a fortunate thing that it happened that way. We may have some hearings in the future where people want to put duplex properties in in neighborhoods that are full of single-family homes that that aren't duplexes. And we might come up with, you know, there might be community members who object to that, but I think here it's consistent with the design in the neighborhood, and that's a positive thing as far as I'm concerned.
Definitely.
Can you speak up?
Sorry, is that any better?
Yeah.
We did posting a bond for the basically sidewalks. In my opinion, professional opinion, it is if that's what they would like, I would suggest that we accept that because they're guaranteeing that it's going to get done, but it's no to relieve any damage that could happen by other contractors or trucks or things.
Thank you for sharing that.
All right, you had something to say?
No.
All right, are there any more comments, questions from commissioners? Are we ready to for someone to make? If you look at page 3-1, the summary of the staff recommendation, that might be good language for someone to make a motion on this.
Trying to get there.
I think there might be a an error in the numbering of the special conditions on that page.
Well, we will make reference to them. I I know that you wanted to make one correction to your reasoning on one of them.
Yes.
We'll 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 make sure that that's incorporated in it. But mainly, I want to get on the record the the bold-faced sentence as as our main motion and reference to 14 conditions. So would someone on the planning commission like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve for approval of the three lot partition application Z 0321-20-M and recommend the following with the following conditions in support of approval. The 14 special commissions.
All right. That's been moved by Commissioner Langston, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any additional discussion on this matter? All right, Tammy, can you call the roll for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Milch?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. The the partition application is approved. Thank you, staff and applicants for working together again very well to, you know, to come up with solutions, creative solutions and design solutions that take a an odd-shaped parcel in a situation that barely fits and make it work. So we're glad that what you've been able to do tonight. I think this concludes this item. Is that correct, Joy? Is there anything else we need to do on that? Okay, so. Zach and Bruce, thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight, and good luck on this project as you move forward. You'll have planning and permitting and or permitting and city work to be done, but at least now we know what it's going to look like, and we're glad that you'll be part of the neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you for your time, and thank Joy for participating in this application with us. I think I'll drop out from the ADU or probably be involved with it at some point. I can read about it in the future.
Very good, you may be involved in building some of those someday.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, same with us, but we appreciate all of you guys, and yeah, thanks so much, and we're looking forward to it.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
All right, the other thing I put on the agenda tonight, yes, Joy?
I was saying goodbye.
Okay, all right, thanks. The other thing I put on the agenda tonight, I was looking, we had a couple of people who had come to previous meetings who had expressed an interest in doing accessory dwelling units in their homes. In both cases, I think they were going to be part of the existing home, like a basement conversion. And the concern came up with both people that we've heard from that the 400 square foot maximum that's currently in our code would not work for them because they had an area of their home that was five or 600 square feet that they wanted to be an ADU. So I looked at the code from the city of Oregon City, and I want you to take a look in particular. Where is it? On the design section, part D, which is the second page. Size, item four. The gross air floor area of an ADU shall not be more than 800 square feet or 60% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling unit, whichever is less. Conversion of an existing basement to an ADU shall be exempt from these size limits, provided that no new floor area will be added with the conversion. To my mind, this addressed some of the issues that had come up in our earlier discussions. I know some commissioners wanted to see reference to the proportion, the ratio of the size of the ADU to the size of the rest of the building. And there was an issue with, if you do a basement conversion, you have a 900 square foot basement, and we had an 800 square foot minimum, you'd have 100 square feet of your basement that could not be part of the ADU that would have to still be part of the house. And that would be a difficult thing to deal with. And and I thought that the language that Oregon City is using addressed those issues, and I just wanted to bring it up for further discussion because I know at some point we'll probably be looking at our own code and perhaps recommending some amendments to the to the code language, and I wonder if this part of it would at least get to some of that. I'll start with the size requirement, and then I have another item about it I wanted to discuss, but did you have a chance to review that, and do you have any reaction to it?
On that particular piece you just read, you know, one other thing we could consider is an attic theoretically would have the same issue.
Right, that's that's possible too, yes, you're right.
Yep.
Yeah, I find this to be a really something we can build on, and back to the size, regardless of an exception for a basement. That 800 feet was was in my thinking originally because if you recall our conversation, you can imagine there's a point where somebody buys a buy, you buy a 700 square foot house, and then you put 1500 square foot ADU on the back of it, well, what have you really got? So I I really think size-wise, obviously, the 400 feet is totally unworkable. But I think that that formula with the 60% for the 800 feet makes sense. And obviously, there's Oregon City, like Gladstone's an old town, and they've got a million basements there, probably had many grandfathered. And so, you know, based on their experience, I like what I'm seeing here, and as I said, I think we've got something that we can build on, so I appreciate your sharing it.
One other thing I'd, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna agree, that 400 square feet is pretty, pretty tough, and the 800 is reasonable, along with the language for the basement that really gives people a good opportunity to make accommodations.
Something else that might come up too is like, I live in a split level, and so people will probably wonder, does the bottom level of a split level count, things like that?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's classified as a basement. I have a a walkout basement in my home, the the front side of the house, you enter at street level, but you go downstairs to a basement that has a sliding glass door out to the backyard. Commissioner Langston, you had a home very similar to that, that has that situation, and I know in my case, it would lend itself very well to to becoming an ADU if the size requirements could be met, so this approach is good. I know that Commissioner Natalie Smith, you also mentioned too, the importance of having a good definition of what an accessory dwelling unit is. And I think that's that's contained in the initial paragraph of this. But I want you to also, it would be nice if you guys could look up at Oregon City's website. They have some really nice, full-color explanatory information about accessory dwelling units and what they are and what they are not, and photographs and examples of different types that people have built. You know, if you can show a design of something that works, you can promote this. And I know we've got a meeting coming up later this week, looking at our house, long-term housing needs in Gladstone. And I was reading something the other day, it talked about, you know, well, would you rather see a 20-unit apartment building go in in your community with all the various parking and other things that are required for that? Or would you rather see 20 individual homeowners provide ADUs in their basements or attics or backyards? And I don't know, you know, how the committee would feel about it, or the community would feel about that, but certainly, the our state legislators want us to be giving homeowners and property owners that option of having these accessory dwelling units. And our code needs to be one that makes them attainable to people, and so I don't want us to settle this tonight, but if I was getting some consensus that at least on the size issues, there's some agreement that this is an approach that might work for us if we were to propose enlarging from the current code minimum.
You brought up the the first paragraph as far as the definition. It did seem like their definition of an ADU is more limited than ours. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought ours did allow for like home-based businesses and stuff, whereas theirs is residential only.
Well, I don't, I don't know, that's another thing I've read recently, as people talk about ADUs, accessory dwelling unit, then they use the term ACU, accessory commercial unit. Somebody who wants to build, you know, put something in their backyard or in their garage if it's if they have the the parking to replace it. But like, you know, we're hoping to put that bridge in at the end of Portland Avenue and get a lot more bicycle traffic through town, and somebody might want to build a unit in their backyard near Portland Avenue to do bicycle repair for people who are coming through and open that up. So we'll have to check what our code allows as far as an accessory unit for commercial purposes. If it's more permissive than this one already, as you thought, Malachi, we would want to be sure to incorporate that, but you know, it's one other thing to enable citizens to to prosper through the use of their own property by either being able to have housing for family members or for rental housing or a a commercial unit as well. So that's something we can discuss in the future. We're not making policy tonight by any means, but I just wanted to expose you to some of the language that's out there that might be helpful to us as we look ahead to this. Any other comments or questions about this?
I know one other area we talked about before is some of the limitations on things like foundations. Right, and whether they had to have a solid foundation or whether they could be more mobile, things like that. That would be an area we'll want to discuss at that later date as well.
Okay. Yeah, I know you you expressed interest in the whole tiny house concept, some of those are on wheels. There are prefabricated homes that can be built in a yard that need a foundation, but, you know, as far as the rules about connecting them to utilities and all the rest, that it gets way beyond my pay scale right now to to go into too much of that, but right, all of those issues will be part of that discussion. I just thought we'd have a little more time in tonight's meeting to just take a look at this and and kind of be thinking about it for for more depth, a more in-depth discussion later on. All right, let me move now to business from the commissioners. I will just go down the line again, and starting with Commissioner Langston, do you have any other items you'd like to bring before us tonight?
Nope, no items to bring for you, and thank you for bringing the ADA stuff, Chairman, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Commissioner Natalie Smith?
I have nothing at this time.
All right, Malachi?
So I want to talk a little bit about the wildfires and our emergency alert system, and so a lot of people got confused because the Clarkamas County Alert System sent out multiple alerts to Gladstone residents saying that we had moved to level two, but it wasn't actually us, it was our neighbors. So people started to freak out, thinking that we had upgraded. I don't know if that's something that we can improve, but we have maybe a year before wildfire season hits next year. Maybe there's something we can do for city alert systems to be, some of you people could subscribe to or something. Obviously, that's outside the scope here, but maybe as a city, we should be trying to plan ahead for next year's wildfires.
Commissioner Malachi, are you referring to the eminent extreme alerts that people were receiving on their cell phones?
Yeah, yeah, I got four.
I did, I got five or six, and if you read them, it does clearly state for what area it is. And I do understand, I do understand what you're saying, that if it was, you know, like initially said Beaver Creek, or I'm looking at them right now on my cellphone, Oregon City, or Canby First, you know, instead of people, because they just see alert, or like the first one I received was fire evacuation in Beaver Creek, go now, you know?
Yeah, and you know, people are like, why subscribed for Gladstone? Right, thinking they're getting a Gladstone alert, but they're not, they're getting a county alert, right?
Yeah.
And so.
I've received them for all over the county, yes.
Yeah, and so I don't know if that's something that can be improved for next year, but if so, that might help. And outside of that, if there's anything we need to do from a planning perspective to be better prepared for wildfire season, it's not going to be getting better anytime soon, so it should be something we think about.
I know the city has its own emergency preparedness committee. We usually think in terms of an earthquake or something else, and not wildfires in connection with that, but this clearly was something that did affect us. We were very close to possibly being going to another level in the evacuation thing. But I I was one who signed up for those alerts just during this event, and when I got them, I did notice that they were for other cities, not my own, even though I think I had put my home address on there, so it may be a system that needs some tweaking. It may be that hearing about changes in the in the zone that was adjacent to ours was a helpful thing. We had family in Zone Two that moved in with us before they were required to, just out of concern and out of wanting to be prepared. And that may have, you know, other people may have done similar things.
Yeah, I definitely don't think it's not helpful, I'm just thinking that there were a lot of people I saw on Nextdoor and things that thought that we were upgraded when we weren't, so.
There were people that looked at the map that showed the the SDA convention center campground as a as an evacuation place and thought it meant that there was a fire there because it was on the same map that showed fires. So, yeah, not everything is really clear when you look at it for the first time, particularly when you're panicked to begin with.
Yeah, I just wanted to hold that up. I felt like I follow the city of Gladstone on Twitter, and they did an amazing job as far as informing people, and the way they worded it, it was very comforting, and it minimized, I feel like it minimized the the amount of hysteria that was being caused during that time. Because as soon as I read the message that from the city of Gladstone, like I immediately like understood exactly what was happening and why decisions were being made, and so I whoever was in charge of that, I definitely commend them for for the information they were providing. That was very, very helpful.
I agree, and we'll we'll get that feedback to them.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Langston, I know that they they've been working hard throughout this whole process, and they are taking any feedback regarding anything that was going on, but I I know that they have, they did an excellent job with the notification to the residents, and they tried their very best to make sure that residents, you know, didn't go were aware that we did not increase in our levels, and so any feedback that you have is appreciated. And I know that they had it also, if it were to go any further into the levels that they had provided that evacuation information as well.
Yeah, and actually, just feedback on that, the the map that he set out was actually really good.
I would add that some of the confusion range.
Oops, I think we lost him.
A mo. And sometimes you've got folks that think you're in an evacuation zone for the fire, and it's actually for the smoke.
All right, Les, do you have other business to share with us tonight? Chris, your.
Just very briefly, I've been working with some folks that were displaced, and our thoughts are with them. One of my friends has been really struggling after losing her home. And I got a call tonight, actually, she's got some accommodations of all places right up the street at the Adventist Campground, so I think it's great that the communities come together, and we really need to take care of our neighbors. I would say one thing, it's, I shared this with someone today, it's it's very ironic that after having all of the fairs canceled, here we've got people and their animals crowded together at the fair. So.
All right, thank you, Les. Commissioner Williams, any business?
I guess I would like to voice my opinion on that. Just real, real briefly, I think it was with the duplexes, especially being across from the other duplexes, I think it's just a great use of the space, and again, some maximizing the area, keeping it the same, and with their ability to provide great parking. A nice feature for the city.
All right, thank you for that for that feedback. Those of you who attended the Housing Needs Analysis Meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, and you will be having another one later this week, you remember they used the term partially vacant land, that's land that already has a house on it, but it's large enough to be subdivided into smaller parcels that could be developed, and this tonight was an example of that very thing. Getting four new housing units on on a on a piece of land, so we're moving in the direction of fulfilling our housing needs for the long term through what we approved tonight, and and I would agree with with your statement, Darren, about about the duplexes. Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes, I have a question first for Cami Bannock, is there a link to this Thursday meeting on the on the city's website somewhere?
It should be posted on the website, I will make sure that it is sent out to all the commissioners tomorrow if you have not already received it. Again, I apologize, I've been out.
No apology needed. Thank you, and then I I do have a Chairman Milch, I might ask you, as you root around for things to challenge us with on a monthly basis.
I might ask you, as you root around for things to challenge us with on a monthly basis.
Yes.
You mentioned parking a couple of meetings prior to. And I'm not suggesting tonight's night, but perhaps you could dial it into one of our upcoming agendas.
I'll try to do that, too. I pulled together some good information. Joy has provided me with something about parking management from some of the current parking gurus who tend to be located in the Los Angeles area because they're the ones who've more than anywhere else in the country have had to deal with parking. And we can look at that. And I did also, I have had opportunities with the library board and with the the library task force to emphasize to them the importance of trying to get a decision on, you know, where parking for the library, the new downtown library would best go. That will help in, you know. You see, the county's been doing the building, and we've exempted them from onsite parking there. But the city hasn't made a decision as to whether the existing, the current library is going to be a parking in the future. And knowing that would have made our job a little easier when we were dealing with that. So those are two issues that we need to look at. And as you know, Commissioner Smith, some of the recommendations on the Housing Needs Analysis, in order to provide the level of housing that we're projected to need in the future, might involve some change in our parking minimums. So we want to look at that and see what that would mean and how appropriate it would be and whether some some other management tools for parking, especially in the downtown area, could help us to move in the right direction on that and still provide the level of of parking and turnover of business users. And the I know, Les, you're always concerned about deliveries and all those things. So it's a big issue, and I will try to, I'll take your suggestion and come up with some reading material for us to look at at a future meeting. I don't know if we have other land use applications coming forward. So maybe we'll have a night where we can devote more time to that.
I have a question. I just wanted to wanted to make sure that the meeting, I believe it's on Thursday, September seventeenth. That is a required meeting for Planning Commission?
Yes, I would say it is. It's a five thirty start. I know that can be difficult for some of you, but it is. Let's see, it's described as a, I'm trying to see if it states who it is it's in.
I thought it was, I thought it was the community outreach follow up of the one we already did.
It is.
Okay, so we will be hearing from the community, I guess. Questions and public comments will be allowed. And and since we might be part of the group that will be making some of the decisions in the future, hearing those public comments would be helpful. So I'm not going to say it's mandatory, but it would be great for the planning commission to be as involved as they could. I think we have, we had another subcommittee on on housing that was invited to the last meeting, too. And I think they're probably be invited to this one as well. Counselor Mercero, you are here tonight. Do you have any comments or feedback for us? Anything to take back to city council or bring to us from them?
Well, thank you for asking. I appreciate all the comments and involvement by the planning commission. And it sure sounds like you're doing a good job for me. I was a bit concerned about the Glen Echo Portland Avenue project. And it is pretty tight in that area. So I believe that everything you put people discuss, I think it's pretty well covered. Thank you.
I I think because that property is, you know, where the current duplexes are, and it's on a hill. I I hear secondhand through things like Nextdoor Gladstone that there are young people who like to ride their bikes down that hill, sometimes unsafely. And the references to to safety at that intersection, I don't think have so much to do with the design of the intersection. It's a it's a four way stop, I think, or three way because it only goes three ways. But I think if anything, this will make it safer, providing the sidewalk and all that. And so I appreciated Mrs. Ellerby's concerns that she raised that with us. And and I know that that'll be in the minds of the planners in the city as they move ahead with this process. So I appreciate that feedback, too. All right, I will recognize a motion to adjourn then.
I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
All right, it has been moved and seconded by Commissioners Smith and Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? We are adjourned.